Call to order the Village of Riverside, Illinois Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Wednesday, October 26, 2022. Planner Siren, please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Chairperson Mateo?
Here.
We have all the JM's tonight. We do have a quorum.
Very good.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting minutes from September 28, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Both Commissioner Miller and I sent some trivial, mostly, well, mine were trivial, edits to Planner Siren, and so those will be incorporated. Any other changes?
I may have a minor change as well, which I'll send.
Oh, okay. All right, please call the roll. Yes. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, Visitors, Petitions, Citizen Requests and Communications. Is there anything you want to add at this time?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Village Board update?
Yes. Assistant Village Manager Monroe presented the second and third segments of the TOD amendments to the Village Board. The Board did not take action on the amendments again, but, you know, again, allowed time for discussion, public input and refinement. The discussion points included concerns about the maximum building heights, particularly about overwhelming the view of historic structures such as the Water Tower, though Trustee Pollock agreed that the minimum building height is more important to establish a streetscape. The second point was concern about minimum building heights, which might discourage the redevelopment of dilapidated or vacant buildings, or discourage businesses such as the recent Sherwin-Williams development with corporate limitations on building design from locating on Harlem Avenue. The third point was interest in creating a Railscape overlay district in the area bound by Harlem and Delaplane between Burlington and Quincy, to exempt those developments from having to abut the parkway sidewalk, allowing an area between the development and the parkway for outdoor dining, for example, within several feet of the train tracks. And the idea is being explored, but the Board had limited discussion on that point. And the Board expressed support for requiring the Preservation Commission review of EV charging stations on public land. So staff is working on related research, preparing additional review materials, and will provide additional presentations at upcoming meetings.
Thank you. Well done. That railroad overlay is interesting. It's not something that we have discussed here.
Yeah.
So it would be new. Next up is Old Business Discussion related to zoning ordinance amendments, accessory structures. Trustee Pollock's going to lead us.
Thank you, Jill and Commission. I'll do an overview based on Ann's staff report, add a few items in that had come up in the last couple of days, based on feedback from individual commissioners. And also, I have some graphic examples that may require me to come up and gather around a table to look at. But first, let me kind of review what is before you. At the last meeting, we received feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding building height, accessory building height, and you had indicated your support for changing the maximum building height from 16 and 18 feet to 20 feet for all residential districts. It's the building height to the peak of the building, so no portion of the building can exceed that. The code will maintain the 12-foot maximum height of a sidewall. So you're going to see the sidewall remain the same. Related to that, we did add, and this was discussed at the last meeting, we added this concept of the 45-degree angle to protect sunlight and shadow and prevent shadows on neighboring properties, to keep it consistent with what, how an accessory building would impact a neighbor's property right now. And I can show you that graphically here in a minute. But we, that's a new change to the code, again, meant to protect sunlight and prevent shadows on adjacent properties consistent with current regulations. A regulation was added stating that dormers have to be set back a minimum of three feet from the first-floor building wall. That would apply on all four sides of the building. That's, you know, dormers by definition are set back from the edge of the roof, but our codes did not say six inches, 12 inches, three feet, five feet. So we threw the number three feet in there. That could be a point of discussion. And again, when we get to the graphics, you'll see that a little bit more clear, what difference that might, may or may not make. But three feet seemed like the logical, a good starting point. We added a definition of dormer to make it clear that a dormer includes, is primarily a window that extends from a rooftop. We, under the advice of Commissioner Sandra Capwood from our Historic Preservation Commission, who is an architect, he suggested that we add, be explicit that electrical subpanels are allowed in an accessory building. I guess that was not clear in our code, and that was an issue that came up in a construction job recently. So we did add that to, to be clear, that electrical subpanels are allowed in an accessory building. And then there are several changes that address the issue and the concerns about conversion of an accessory building to a dwelling unit. One is throughout the definitions, Ann has added a statement that, a qualifying statement for all these various definitions that are applicable, that accessory buildings cannot be used as a dwelling unit. So we kind of took a belt and suspenders approach. It's in several locations in the code, in the, in the proposed updates, but certainly welcome your feedback, but we think that addresses that concern. More specifically, there's language that states specifically that accessory buildings may not have cooking facilities. That term was chosen by staff because it's used elsewhere in the code, rather than referring to it as a kitchen. And again, that just is to make it consistent in terms of language. We've added, went back to your original recommendation regarding allowing plum, limited plumbing, no bathrooms or, or shower, I'm sorry, no showers or bathtubs, but you can have toilet and basically, a toilet and a sink is allowed in an accessory building, much like, the term escapes me now, the bathroom that doesn't have a shower or bath in your house.
Powder room.
Pardon?
Powder room.
Powder room, thank you. So that is allowed into the code, and, but again, no showers or bathtubs. Question came up after the staff report went out, why, under the draft amendment, poolhouses, an accessory building that's used as a poolhouse would not be allowed to have a shower or bath? I, I think that was, it'd be certainly whatever, if you want to add, add that back in, that's fine. But my personal thinking was, and as I said before, it's a matter of equity. If someone has a swimming pool, they get to have a bath or shower, but if they don't have a swimming pool, they can't have a bath or shower. Then I thought about that after our last meeting, said, there's no code that requires a bath or shower if you have a pool. And with the small lots, relatively small lots in Riverside, I ventured to guess that most people with swimming pools don't even have a poolhouse, and if they do, they may or may not have a bath or shower, because they're proximate to the house, and they can use the bath and shower in the house. And it's not really necessary by code to have a bath or shower. And again, if you're really wanting to get away from full plumbing facilities that can be converted to a dwelling, my suggestion would be to leave it as is. But if you feel like that you want to go back to what you had before, where poolhouses are allowed to have baths and showers, then that's fine, we can, we can change that up. I would caution, though, I think, and Ann, I meant to warn you about this, but I think that if you do that, you need to go back and look at the definition of a swimming pool. Because I, I did not do the research myself, but others have. And what I was told by others who have looked at this is that if you have a little baby pool, that qualifies as a swimming pool. Obviously, that's not the intent. But there's a spectrum there. Okay? I have an in-ground pool, that's obvious, that's a, you know, full-blown swimming pool. I have a portable but large above-ground pool. I have a hot tub. Where do I, you know, you have to figure out where to draw that line if you're going to make an exception for poolhouses, so that staff knows when they issue a permit, whether or not it qualifies as a poolhouse based on the definition of what a swimming pool is. So that's a point of discussion for tonight. Let's see, what else am I missing before I show you the graphics? Oh, and we, no fault of the Commission, but myself, we, I was not clear about the 12% and 800 square feet, but I think we cleared that up today, that it was your recommendation previously, and we had intended not to change that, but I think we accidentally did. But it's our understanding now that your recommendation is that the combined area of all accessory buildings cannot exceed 12% of the lot, and that each individual accessory building cannot exceed 800 square feet. Is that correct? Is that everyone, okay, so good. We don't have to talk about that one, then. We're all on the same page. So, given that, now we get to go to kindergarten, start playing with cutouts. And I'm not sure how the best way to do this is. I have two-scale buildings, and I have a two-scale graphic of the side of an accessory building. And I could show you what, and I apologize to anyone watching the video, this is not feasible, but I'm sure if you want to take a peek over here. So, more to add. So this is, this is a side view of a, of a property, a 50-foot wide lot. Scales one inch equals five feet, 50-foot wide lot. Property line here, and here, yeah, 50 foot in this area. Show you the minimum three foot setback, no matter what, 12-foot sidewalls, and then that 45-degree plane. So this becomes the building envelope on 50-foot wide lot. Any questions about that? Does that make sense? Okay. So, imagine this cross-section is in your backyard, and you want to do a 24-by-24-foot, a 24-foot wide garage, and you want to maximize at 20 feet. This is an accessory building, it's 24 feet wide, 20 feet to the peak. Three foot, the dormer, this is the dormer, setback from the front, but three foot from the side would be three foot in from the front as well, if you're looking at three dimensions. And then if maximized in this drawing, it maximizes that 20 foot, the maximum-sized dormer you could have. To stay in that building, 45-degree building envelope in a 20-foot height, you could see this building now becomes eight feet from the side property lot. Now, people have options. I have different sized buildings, but imagine, you're really just looking at this side profile anyway. So here, for example, is a 30-foot wide building with maximizing the size of the dormer. Again, you're still at eight feet. You're still at eight feet, because this profile stays the same, no matter how big the building is that way. So what if I have an existing structure that's at three feet, and I want to retrofit it? You can start to make this dormer small, setback farther. So here's a dormer with a four-foot setback. I think that's the right one. Yeah. This is the one I wanted to show you. Dormer with a four-foot setback from the side. Now, when you tuck that in there, it's seven feet from the side lot line. And obviously, you could just keep making that smaller, or not have it on that side at all, and just have it on one side. And you would be, you would be good. I mean, here, you could actually go, this is at four-foot setback, but you could go to another foot over here, just to have the dormer on one side, and be able to use the existing foundation without having to move the building to get that space. And with this, a 24-foot wide garage, 24 to 30 feet deep, you'd still have a nine-foot space here. You could even, you know, if you wanted to come over a little bit further, you could. You'd still have a pretty substantial room up there. And you could see, you, you would be meeting the setback. That plane is protected. No matter what, you have to be below and inside that envelope. So, I mean, there's other, other sized graphics here, just if you care to see. But again, this profile here is the same, no matter which, how big the building gets this way. This side, on the interior side, and this is one of the reasons why we wanted to have the three-foot setback of a dormer, because on this interior side, you're obviously well within the plane, the 45-degree building envelope plane. But we would not want, I don't think we would want a building that 12 feet here, setback one feet, and another eight feet up. That would be kind of abusing the, the regulations, in my view. So that three-foot dormer setback, make sure it still is a one-and-a-half-story building, doesn't suddenly look like a two-story building on this side. And that's what, that's a term I use, I think it's industry standard for one-story buildings with an attic room like that. We usually refer to that as a one-and-a-half story building, even though this is, for all practical purposes, a full story in terms of your ability to walk around in there. This would, you'd end up with a, you know, under this drawing and all these drawings, I'm showing a nine-foot front, so you have an eight-foot door, nine foot to the bottom of the ceiling beams. You know, 12-inch-thick ceiling beam is required to have this habitable up here, have it something that you can occupy. And then 12-foot is up, or 12 inches is required at the top as well. So you end up with nine, one, nine, and one on a 20-foot tall building. That makes sense?
They all look like very nice diagrams, very clear. Can you point out roughly where would the seven-foot, six-inch ceiling height start?
Well-
Do you have any idea?
I noticed that just this evening with the definition of attic.
It's a story, and then it's also an attic.
Right. I think we, we have, if, if, if we're going to the 20 feet, we have to fix that somehow. Because the whole reason to go to 20 feet, I mean, at, at the 18-foot height, we have a, an eight-foot tall ceiling.
You did already, okay.
And, and, but the feedback we got from some people was, that's still tight, you know, for the way they want to use it. And that's why we went up to the 20 feet, was to allow that height. So I did not realize that seven, what is it?
Seven foot.
Seven-six was in there. So I think if, if we're going to 20 feet, then there's no reason to go to 20 feet unless we change that.
Well, it doesn't, are we interactive at this point or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just wondering.
There's nothing that prevents one from going above seven-six. Since the use, the envelope that is at or taller than seven foot six is what contributes to the definition of a story, okay? In here, in an attic, sorry, a story.
Right. An attic doesn't count as a story. And that's relevant to the both requirements for houses, because houses can only be three, three-and-a-half stories tall.
Right. So my reading of this, though, is that this would not be an attic, this would be a story. So this becomes a two-story.
It's only a story if the height volume of seven foot six or above is greater than 50% of the floor.
Well, this would, this would be, under all these options, you would have more than 50% of, of that attic space with a nine-foot clearance.
It depends. If you do something like a pedestal in the middle of, this is a poor drawing. I don't know that we're actually going for that much bulk, because typically a dormer is more of an extension out from the plane of the roof, rather than a giant cube. So is this, is the definition of story a way to prevent the creation of a cube on top?
I'm not sure. Is there something, I'm, I'm assuming, this may not be an issue, but I'm, yeah, but I'm assuming that if this is considered two stories, somewhere else in the code, it says two stories isn't allowed. That may be wrong, I don't know. Maybe that's perfectly fine by code.
It used to say detached accessory structures shall be limited to one story, but that's being struck out now. Right. We can change that. I don't, I wouldn't think that would be an issue.
Well, do we want to-
Well, let's finish up where we need to see that, so that we can get back to the microphones. So one question I had, I'm not like you, I don't like dormers, so I can do that.
If you remove this?
Yes.
Right. Absolutely, yeah.
And that would work-
And have just a dormer on one side, yeah, sorry.
And, and that also would work, because we're assuming a very small garage here. There are some lots with very large garages, both large and small lots, that have large garages. So you, just without having any dormers, you could have a large second-story room if you've got a 40-by-20-foot garage.
The 30-by-30-foot garage, if it was 30-by-30, is 900 square feet. So with our limitation of 800 square feet per building, then by definition, it can be 30 by 27.
Well, if it's a 40-by-20 garage, what would that work out to?
That's 800 square feet.
Well, no, I know that, but then what would the second story be, roughly?
How do you mean?
The second, the room on top. If it was a 40-by-20-foot garage, it would probably be what, 10 by 15? I mean, it's going to be a decent size.
This truly does get into some architectural definitions of dormers. And there, I know you've added the definition in here, but like I said, are we, I don't think we're going for the cube on top.
There was not the intent.
I know that's not the intent, but I'm bringing it up because this is where we have to define that out of how we write this.
Right. So this building, you could imagine, could come along here and over like that. Or, or you could have, you could have kind of a barn-like roof.
Yeah.
To get more space up there, in which case, you'd probably, you know, with this dormer at, this is the four-foot setback. So this, this dormer, with this dormer, this room where it's nine-foot clearance, it's going to be as much as eight feet, because with the, the other one that shows the three-foot setback, you can see it's, well, that's not a good example, but you, you see, I think you could see that. So you could, I think even without a dormer, well, let's see. So one, two. So if you get to nine feet there, actually, it's going to be eight feet because of this, this roof rafter. If you could get to eight feet there, I mean, you could, you wouldn't have much space for a room up there without the dormer, I think.
So for principal structures, the dormer can go into, what do you call that?
Space.
Setback plane. Setback plane.
It can.
Yes. Do we want to-
I did not know that.
Say, we're doing a 24-foot one, do we want to allow dormers to invade the plane for accessory buildings? I, I have to say, I've always been uncomfortable with having dormers being allowed to pierce the setback plane for principal buildings. I've never liked that idea. And I like the suggestion how you changed for tonight, where it simply, it doesn't address dormers, just as any part of the building just can't break the plane. I like that. Something that occurred to me before you made that change was simply putting a square footage limit on the second story. You know, like you can only have 150 square feet, or 200 square feet, or whatever it might be, or some range.
Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, I, I personally would, would not want to allow dormer to encroach, because the whole idea of this, and I'm surprised, I did not know we did that for principal houses, and maybe that is something we should look at. Because the whole idea is, is sunlight and shadows on your neighbors. And if you're doing that, that's as much shadow as if this building came up, you know, almost all the way. So-
I'm not advocating it, I'm just-
I, I know, I know. You're just, point of discussion, very-
That's actually where I was going somewhat, by defining, by not allowing a second story. We are by definition saying that that seven-foot height in this accessory structure can only occupy 50% of the floor. So we are restricting it inwards to some degree. I'm trying to figure that out right now.
Yeah.
I'm trying to do math.
Do we have more points or questions, or can we sit down?
You can always bring it back up if you need to.
So the 45- The 45-degree angle for the principal structures varies by, by district. Yes. Where did the nine feet come from? Because that's not currently in our code, I don't think. That's a question for you.
What's that?
Can you go to the podium, please? Where did the nine feet come for where you start the setback plane?
It's, it's basic geometry. If you have a 12-foot sidewall, right now, we're allowed a 12-foot sidewall, three feet from the side lot line. So if you just plop a 45-degree angle on top of that 12 feet, three feet in, you're going to get a nine feet.
Okay.
So it, again, it was, the intention was to preserve sunlight the way you get it now, on, to not change that impact on neighboring properties.
So I think what happened when you changed the definition to say no part of the building can pierce that plane, is it ensured that there would be enough air to neighbors, because you'd, because the way you structure it, and you couldn't just put up some kind of a shed dormer that's going to block all that. So that's what I liked. It seemed, it also seemed much easier to enforce.
I do like Joel's suggestion on putting a max on that second story, that half-story, or whatever we call it, just, just as another way to ensure you're avoiding unintended consequences, you know, because, and, and, and still remain within the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. What we're trying to accomplish is a reasonably sized room- What we're trying to accomplish is a reasonably sized room above your garage that you can use as an office or art studio or playroom. Hundred square feet is a, is a decent, a hundred and fifty square feet's a really nice-sized room for that purpose. So, um, so that, yeah, I, I think that's something you ought to consider. I didn't really think about that until you brought it up.
So as currently proposed, there is no changed setback because it's based on design as long as the forty-five degree angle works, right? But Planner Siren, did you want to talk about what you saw recently in another municipality for every foot you go up beyond?
Sure. Yeah, and that's, that's just it. There was, and I apologize, I don't know which community I was looking at, I looked at a number of communities. One of them that did allow a higher accessory structure, uh, height, said after a certain point, let's say sixteen feet, uh, for every additional foot that you went up, you had to move out over an additional foot. Um, that, that's an option, we didn't do any math or, you know, provide examples, you know, we'd be happy to do that, but that's an option, um, that we might want to consider.
That's, I mean, that's exactly the same thing that we're doing here.
Yes.
It's just a different way to get to the same result. Uh, and, and that is more common in codes, uh, or I should, I don't know about more common, but it is common in codes to see language that says maximum height of twenty feet, uh, but every, every foot over fifteen feet, you have to be setback another foot. This does the same thing, but I think it gives more, I think it, it, it assures the same result, but at the same time providing some flexibility, and I think you get to the same place, so.
But if somebody, somebody can build a twenty-foot garage three feet off the lot line if they don't have a dormer on that side of the building. So that's, that's the one, yeah, benefit of having the setback angle is it keeps a large, tall, boxy building from maximizing that area.
I would, I would argue though that that additional mass does not affect the neighbor's property because it's, it, instead of going here and stopping, it's going here and stopping. So the same amount of sunlight and air and wind is coming to the neighbor's property and their view, their view is, from their yard, is the same whether that angle goes up to eighteen feet or whether it goes up to twenty feet. So.
I, I agree with that viewpoint. As long as we're allowing accessory building of up to eight hundred square feet with a twelve-foot sidewall, then that's just what it is. But speaking of, of mass, as I understand it, if, with, even with the new definition of dormer, which I'm a little critical of because it talks about like a window, for the second story, someone could put up a shed dormer that goes from three feet in on one side to three feet in on the other side. So if you had a forty-foot wide garage, you'd have a room, you'd have walls of a room that are thirty-four feet wide, roughly, thirty-three feet maybe. And then if it was a forty by twenty garage, it would be thirty-four by fourteen feet roughly. That's very large, that's a very big mass. And so just, and a thought is whether someone, if people, you know, board, whoever wants to think about, is that too big of a room? We don't really want something that big, that would be too much mass. I don't know what the answer is, but just something I'm thinking about.
I think Joel's suggestion would, would address that of saying.
Wouldn't be a story.
Two hundred square feet max, no matter what, or whatever number.
So do we want to go through the proposed changes? For accessory structure, I thought last time we talked about adding examples to that? So that accessory structure includes accessory buildings and fences and sidewalks and whatnot? Or do we think that's not helpful?
That's done in the definition of structure.
It's, it's, there's.
Buildings, fences.
It's, yeah, there's examples in the buildings portions.
And in the structure portion, yeah, in the structure definition.
Yes.
Okay. Point was to be parallel with accessory building, which also has examples, but I'm fine with that.
No, I think there's merit to that because we do need to define something.
I think it should mirror whatever is in structure, should have the same examples that are in the definition of structure.
Well, but what about, uh, a structure is a broader definition than a building, so.
No, then accessories, oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Accessory structure is.
I'm getting confused.
Yeah.
But Chairman Mateo was talking about an accessory structure having examples in the accessory structure definition, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then I was just saying, I should think it should mirror whatever is in the definition of structure so that it's, it's not confusing, so you have exactly the same examples.
No, you, you don't need that because it's, in the definition of accessory building, it says an accessory, an accessory building is also an accessory structure. But not all accessory structures are buildings. So all we need to do is provide an example of a structure that's not a building.
I, I, what, what is an accessory structure then?
I'm not sure. That's actually kind of.
Yeah, I mean, if we're not, we either, we gotta figure that out.
It's a patio.
Well, patios, parking areas, I mean, those are.
And that's what it needs to.
Okay, well, then we put in a second sentence, th- this, there should be a second sentence under accessory structure paralleling the one in accessory building, saying an accessory structure is not necessarily accessory building, and examples include patios, decks, you know, stuff like that. So I, I, I agree, I think it should, because I, yeah.
I have to say, a little surprised to see more or less in code.
Yeah, where is that?
In structure.
Yep.
Power enforcing things, I'm not sure what I would do with that.
Where's that?
It's quaint.
Says the.
Under structure.
Definition of structure at the end of the first line, the use of which requires more or less permanent location on the ground.
Um, that gets into things that may not be, they might be sitting on foundation blocks.
Yeah.
Where it's not specifically anchored to a foundation element, but it's, it's pretty immobile.
I, I suspect that I read it as being this building is not permanently attached to the ground, it can be removed. My house can be removed, and they, they tear down houses and foundations all the time. So there's no such thing as permanently attached to the ground. And so more or less to be, that's the way I read it, that may not be the right way to read it, but.
The, I think, I'm gonna say that's probably not the way to read it because it says, or attached to something having a permanent location on the ground.
Right, so I'm thinking, so for instance, the, um, the outdoor awnings at La Barra, with the poles go into anchors that are built into the sidewall. So the poles are removable, the anchors are there permanently. Is that an example?
I, I think that's.
So are we keeping more or less?
Uh, I mean, we can, we can use a different term, but I, I think the meaning has to stay probably. I understand what you're saying, it's not very legalistic sounding word.
Any other comments on the definitions?
Well, I, I had a, a comment on the dormer definition. A window set vertically in a structure projecting through a sloping, is that, is that what a dormer is? I don't know. Because I, whenever I think of a dormer, I mean, you can think of like a, you know, House of Seven Gables kind of dormer, or a shed dormer, which is what people will be using in this instance, and that has multiple windows.
That is literally the definition of dormer.
It is, okay, well, then it's, but.
You found the same Google's idea.
Maybe you should say one or more windows, or.
This is Merriam-Webster, I take it, or Dictionary?
Mm-hmm. Oxford. And then that raises the question, what if someone has a wall without a window? What if they're a photography darkroom or something, what if they?
I personally felt, feel that it should have a window, that that's critical.
For like building.
To, to, that, that there be some kind of fenestration that lightens the, the appearance and, um.
Okay.
Yeah. And you would need a window to use that room anyway, I think. I think a dormer to me has to be primarily, the face of it has to be primarily a window. We could tweak it a little bit by clarifying that it also includes a roof and sidewalls or something. I just Googled that definition, and that's what I came up with. We could certainly continue to look at that and see if we can't find a better definition.
Well, I guess the, yeah, the broader question would be if someone's putting a second structure above the roof of their garage, could any part of that be considered not a dormer? And we're asking that it be set in three feet from the wall, I mean, should there be some reference to a, I don't know, a wall, a structure or something, not just say everything that's up there is gonna be a dormer?
Well, it, it's, it does say in a structure, or however you define structure on a structure, but pred, it, Mike, the critical element of the definition, I think, is projecting through a sloping roof.
Yeah, and this, but then, of course, you get to the issue, what if you have a flat roof and you have your box? And someone has a modernist kind of thing and they're not putting on a dormer, they're putting a box?
This, well, the, in this case, you have, we're defining a dormer as projecting through a sloping roof, so.
So it wouldn't.
Putting a box on top of a flat roof is clearly not a dormer.
Right.
Because it's not projecting through.
That's true, and it still would have to make the setback plane and all the rest maybe.
I, I think additional caveats or.
Be closer though than three feet to the edge of the sidewall, if it was properly placed on the lawn.
To get to our goal, I don't think so. It's not supposed to be a primary element of that roof. You, you're trying to get away from shed dormers.
No, I, well, what I'm try, I'm trying to imagine all the possibilities that could exist. Let's say you have a hundred-foot wide lot, someone's got a garage right in the middle of their backyard with a flat roof and they put a box. Could it, now, what you suggested was maybe, I mean, having the limitation on the square footage, or not having it be a story. I just want to make sure that there's no way that people could build something that we would, is not our intent, particularly if it's a new construction and then it's too late to fix it.
I think a square footage limitation is a primary way to do that.
Yeah, that would work, I think, okay. So I would, I guess, I guess the definition of dormer is, is fine with me.
Other thoughts on definitions?
Um, this is section ten eleven dash four. My section?
Yes.
So, um, I, I mean, I wanted to, I don't know if we're gonna talk about the poolhouse issue separately or if that's included now because it is in definitions.
We can do it now.
Okay. So I, you know, I mean, I, I think what's in attached, the, the new attachment that was provided to us prior to the meeting, um, you know, you know, Doug had mentioned that, you know, his, uh, you know, God bless you, Doug, your, your belief in equity, that everybody should, you know, if Joe's got a, a pool and, and I don't, I should, so, you know, it's not fair that he gets a shower. I, I disagree. I, I think if you, if you've got a pool and a poolhouse, you get a shower, and if that's, if people want to say that's unfair, that's, you know, the world is, the world is harsh. That, that doesn't bother me. I, I do completely agree though that this, this does raise the issue of having to address what a swimming pool is. And I'm not sure if it needs to be addressed here or throughout the code.
Yeah, can I come in on that?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we've looked at this before, maybe even when we were initially addressing this subject, or at least in some context in the past years, but I think what we found was, you know, a cross-reference back to the building code regulations in the village code on swimming pools, had a pretty good definition that we were all comfortable with, defined a pool how we wanted it to be defined, and, and wouldn't allow inflatables and that kind of thing, so. Uh, we can double-check that, but that's my recollection.
Okay, so they just add something in here as defined in the code?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be perfect, yeah.
So can I follow, ask a follow-up on that? Does it, do you recall, Michael, does that reference only in-ground pools or above-ground pools? Where, how does it?
I, I can't remember exactly, and it's the one meeting, I didn't bring my computer.
I'd be happy to read it to you.
Okay.
It is a little lengthy. "As used in this chapter, the term swimming pool shall be deemed to refer to any receptacle for water or any artificial pool or body of water, having a depth at any point capable of holding twenty-four inches of water depth, or having a surface area exceeding one hundred square feet, and which is constructed, installed, altered, or repaired at or upon a privately-owned residence for use by the individual owner or lessee thereof and the family, friends, or guests of such owner or lessee for the purposes of bathing, swimming, wading, and not for the purpose of profit or in connection with any business used on the premises. Said term shall include concrete pools constructed below ground level and pools of plastic, rubberized cloth, or other metal, wood, or similar materials installed either above or below ground level."
That wasn't as good as I remembered.
Is that what else include a hot tub? Or could conceivably, because it's more than two feet deep, and it's, ten by ten hot tub would meet the, uh, size requirements?
So was it, and was it two feet deep and was there a one hundred square foot?
Or one hundred square feet.
Or one hundred.
Oh, yeah, for sure, then.
So a twenty-foot square hot tub that's twenty-four inches deep would be a pool.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know if now's the time for it to, I mean, I think we need to think about revising that standard.
Right.
Because I, you know, I don't think you want people building poolhouses because they've got a hot tub or someone buying a, you know, a, the smallest possible above-ground pool they can find, putting it up, and then saying, well, now I gotta build a poolhouse with a shower. Because that, you know, someone will.
So, so would you want to limit it to in-ground pools? Or are you open to poolhouses for above-ground pools?
I, I'd like to limit it to in-ground pools, but I don't know how many homes have above-ground pools, and if this, I, you know, I, you know, is this gonna open a can of worms for that? I mean, is this something we have to look at, or, I mean, we could also always grandfather those in, I suppose. You know, non, non-existing, you know, any.
Right, what, so what would be your concern, that there was a poolhouse associated with an above-ground pool right now?
Well, yeah, because I just, I just think it's, if, if, if there is, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know what you, you know, what would you do? Are they suddenly non-compliant, or would you be allowed to?
They're, they're legal non-conforming, they could stay.
Okay, they're okay, then. So then that's probably okay, but I would say on a going-forward basis, basis, it has to be an in-ground pool, and that's just to protect what I'm, us from what I'm suggesting could happen, is buying the kiddie pool and then.
Right. Because I don't know if, I don't know if we want to necessarily change the definition of swimming pool in the building code area, but we can put a limiter on it in the zoning code in terms of the poolhouse showers and suchlike.
Well, and I think what you were saying, John, is you don't want someone bringing in this as minimal a structure as possible.
Right.
And then using that to justify the construction of the poolhouse with its additional facility.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll be extreme here, but a barrel, being more than twenty-four inches deep and being able to submerge myself in it would count as a pool under the definition that we just saw.
And can I ask, does, does having a pool that is defined there, does that then trigger the fencing and landscaping and all those other things that we sometimes associate with pools?
I would assume, I don't know.
Right, so that's kind of lim, limits their ability to, hmm? I, I guess though, although, are, are we really gonna make somebody landscape or fence a, a hot tub? fence a, a hot tub?
I, I don't know about Riverside's building code, but the standard model code does not require fence, you can have a cover as an option.
For a hot tub or a pool?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, at, at least in the standard. My recollection of the standard international code, we could have a local amendment that's different.
I believe that's correct. I think that's true, from my recollection, so you'd have a cover of a pool.
Yeah.
Or a hot tub.
Well, well, at any rate, we understand the intent, and we can address that prior to the next meeting.
But let me ask this, is, is there agreement that you want to somehow limit it to in-ground pools for this purpose?
I'm not sure I agree with that. I, I don't know that much about pools, but I think above-ground pools can be, you know, expensive and highly used, or very common. I, I just don't.
Actually.
I have an opinion.
I would support John's statement about in-ground. I can, I am a witness to the fact that there were, there is at least one above-ground pool that was installed during COVID time, and it is now gone. So they're not that hard to take down. Again, using it as justification to build that poolhouse, I think you're. We want to eliminate that risk.
You can fill in. Pools too. It would cost a lot more money, you're right, but I, I don't know, I don't know if we're, if it's a very, if it's a fine point. I, I don't have an opinion.
I think we're both looking at the idea that this poolhouse becomes a awfully easy thing to convert into an illegal dwelling unit.
Speaking of illegal dwellings.
Right, so there was a question raised prior to the meeting by Commissioner Miller concerning, you know, the idea of what happens if a illegal dwelling unit is created, and how do we enforce that? So, so one of the nice things in Riverside compared to some other communities that I deal with is you guys have these transfer inspections, right? And so that is a natural time to identify those, and in that situation, if you are, if you find there to be an illegal dwelling unit, they're not going to get a certificate of compliance, without a certificate of compliance, they're not able to record a deed, and so, you know, they're essentially hung up. We would not, we would not authorize that to go forward until there was a deconversion that happened, which means, you know, reversing the things that have made this illegal, whether it's a kitchen, whether it's a full bath. We, we have the requirement in there about the utilities, so one of the good ways, and I was happy to see it i- in the code, is that you have to run your utilities from the main house, you're not getting separate utilities out there. And so if we were to find that someone had illegally hooked up and, and had separate accounts for those, we would require those to be addressed as well. So, so there are ways to do it, and, and I think that would be pretty effective. Beyond transfer inspections, it's kind of the same thing, if we got complaints, and we're able to get in to inspect, either through voluntary admission, or, or in an extreme case, an administrative search warrant, you can do the same type of things. But in that sense, you're using ticketing powers and that kind of thing. But we can issue daily fines, and things that really add up and will be effective in reversing this. But, but the nice thing is, you know, compared to the other places where you have your transfer inspections, and, you know, some houses do remain in the same ownership for 40 years, but others turn over relatively frequently, and, and hopefully we would catch these as we go along. And as Trustee Pollak said at the last meeting, it, you know, it's not, it's not like everybody is out to bypass the system and create these illegal dwelling units, so hopefully it would be a pretty rare occurrence where it happened.
Hopefully.
Yep.
But ha, has, has there been any enforcement of such a situation, say, the last five?
Yeah, I, I talked to Ashley today, I mean, she referenced one situation, I think where a basement unit had been turned in, so not an accessory building, but they found a basement had been converted into a separate dwelling unit, and they were made to reverse that.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure, like, before we go down the road, that there actually is an active philosophy of.
Right, so, so when we did, so, so in addition to having the transfer inspections, we put this compliance stamp issue in there, so we don't have a transfer tax like some places, but you have to go get a stamp from the village, or have to show your certificate of compliance in order to get your deed recorded, and all the title companies and the Cook County Recorder know that, they're not going to take a Riverside deed unless you have that certificate of compliance accompanying it.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Speaking of dwelling units.
Yes.
The edits that you did very quickly today regarding poolhouses, three times you put in, with the exception of coach house dwelling unit and a residential poolhouse as defined here, and, as I emailed you earlier, to me, that sounds like a poolhouse can be a dwelling unit. So I'm looking at these top three yellow highlighted ones, and I, do others interpret it that way?
I kind of saw that, right, but.
You could.
If you then look at the definition of residential poolhouse, it explicitly says, I think you can't have the cooking facility or the shower, but.
I can work on wordsmithing. Great, thank you. Okay. Shall we move on to the 1073? Any questions, comments?
This isn't, this isn't quite our goal here, but is there a reason we require that no accessory building shall be constructed prior to construction of the principal building? Does it matter? In number one, A, 1073.
Doug knows.
That language is very common in zoning ordinances, because it prevents someone from building a garage on a vacant lot. That does not, and I know it gets, it makes it sound like you have to finish your house before you can build your garage, but no, I mean, I, I'm sure that the village would issue permits for both concurrently. They just would not issue an occupancy for either one unless the house got the occupancy and was ready to be occupied. Is that fair to say, Ann?
Yes.
Makes sense?
Yeah, I, I agree, it is a very common provision, and we have encountered, you know, garages sitting alone, and everyone's.
No, thank you. That, that addresses where I was, didn't know what the history of that was, and now I do. Thank you.
I have a comment on six, 6B, that point about where the, where you measure the side, the side lot line, and with the building plane, et cetera, et cetera. I know this language is exactly what is said for the regular bulk requirements for principal buildings, which is, shall intersect the planes that begin at a point nine feet above grade at the side and rear lot lines. I, then when I look at the definition of grade, this is something that's bothered me for a while, too, the definition of grade, I don't feel is strong enough, because it, it's, well, the definition is, I'll just read it. Grade, the average level of the finished surface of the ground adjacent to the exterior walls of the building. So to me, there's a couple problems with that. The average level of the finished surface, but there's no definition of aver, where are you taking the average? Are you looking at this precise side lot line, and you're going like three inches on either side along the entire side lot line, one foot, one foot? There can be a significant difference in elevation. It can just happen that, that, and also, someone can alter the level of that side lot line if they wanted to try and get a larger building in. But then going further in the definition, it says, the ground adjacent to the exterior walls of the building, but here, the side lot line is, in our instance, with accessory buildings, three feet away, with a house, it's five feet away, so it doesn't seem that, I, I don't know, it should reference the exterior walls of the building in that instance.
To address your issue, it might be better to define grade as the average elevation at the lot lines.
Yeah, and I would say within some, not just the point of the lot line, but maybe within.
At the lot lines.
Between the lot line and the building, or something like.
There's no risk that someone builds a mountain in the middle of their yard and says, here's the grade, because you can't build, you can't create grade on a lot line, it is what it is, otherwise you're encroaching into your neighbor's yard.
I suppose you could do it right on the lot.
Can we add this to our continuing, expanding list of?
Okay, things sort of, okay, that's fine with me.
Right, it might be beneficial to look at how some other communities define grade.
Is this now item H?
Well, we kind of touched on that with the Todd, which is when we were talking about that sign issue and locating the base of the sign.
So looking at the next one, accessory building shall be prohibited in street yards. Why was the possibility of building a side yard garage deleted? Because it's not specific enough, or?
I brought that up because, exactly, it is meaningless to me when I read that. It, it puts, to me, it puts staff in an impossible situation of trying to decide how that, what that means and how to apply that. Who decides inadequate room? I mean, the way that was written to me, it means that if someone comes in and says, well, I believe I have inadequate room for detached garage in, behind my house, so I'm going to put it 10 feet from the corner side, street yard, or whatever. And then staff has to decide whether it's inadequate or not, and you don't want, staff doesn't want to do that, I don't think. And I certainly wouldn't want to put staff in that position. So, yeah, I, I, I quite frankly had no idea where that came from, what.
Planner Siren?
I, I think the language, excuse me, that's proposed to be deleted is subjective, so I, I do think it could be better worded. The thought just occurred to me that I looked at a fence on a corner lot that was effectively rectangular, and because of the shape and dimensions of the lot, it didn't really have a rear yard, so in that case, but it did have room to the side where they could have built an accessory structure. What I would recommend is that I take a look at rewording that language, and, and bring that back to you.
Great, thank you.
And number five, it still says any accessory structures, and everything else says buil, essentially buildings, and the name of the subsection A has been changed to buildings. But I wasn't sure whether, you know, that was an oversight, or whether maybe that should stay, because there could be accessory structures deemed to be historically significant, whether it's a fence, or.
I think you need to leave it, because it, we addressed, we had the, I don't remember how far back, but the former foundations of the greenhouse.
Yep, so, so I'm fine with that, I just think maybe we should change A back to accessory buildings or structures in residential districts, or something like that. Just the heading.
That works for me.
Yes.
Good catch.
And in four, fourth line down where it says kitchen and bathroom facilities, should we put full bathroom?
Sure.
Yes.
Clarity doesn't hurt.
Yeah, I think that is a place where structures can be replaced with buildings right after that, right after, in that same sentence, so I can have a bathroom and a patio.
Yep. And then the only other thing I noticed was in small F on the, on page three, the bottom, the last line, instead of all such facilities shall be extended from the existing primary dwelling, I was going to suggest, all utilities serving such facilities shall be extended from the existing primary dwelling.
Again, clarity is good.
I was also wondering about in item F, we don't necessarily have to have full heating in HVAC facilities, it could be partial just to serve that upper space.
But it, because it says may, I mean, if you have less than that, that would be fine.
That allows, okay.
Yep.
That's fine.
And in that same F, second line from the bottom, all such facilities, is missing the word shall right after that.
Yep, thank you. Do we want to change the third sentence to say accessory buildings? To include the showers in the poolhouse, something in there? With the exception of poolhouses, which can have a bathtub or shower?
I would probably add a sentence.
Any other text changes?
Are we going to think about?
Go back to story?
Not even story. Is this, are we only allowing slab on grade, i.e.
I'm sorry?
Are we only allowing slab on grade, i.e. preventing crawl spaces in basements?
For accessory structures.
For accessories, yes, I am specifically referring to accessory buildings, but there's nowhere in here where we specifically prohibit the construction of an underground or raised element.
What, what are your thoughts?
I have done no thinking or research related to that, but I'd be happy to do some, some looking and get back to you, but.
And would we allow it?
At some point, it's private property. Right, why would, why would we not? I mean, I thought about that a month or so ago, and then I thought, well, it doesn't really make any difference. I mean, if someone wants to build a basement under their, under their garage, why not?
It's just something to consider. I'm, as I think about it, I'm not sure how, where it goes, and that's really what we're looking at, is where does this go?
I don't think there's been a lot of demand for it.
I was just thinking of a, a video I saw recently of a greenhouse that was partially underground to take advantage of winter, consistent temperatures during winter months, so.
I actually just thought of just a cellar, a root cellar.
Sure, a root cellar, yeah.
A root cellar is acceptable, you know, it's.
A root cellar, if you had a root cellar.
Yes.
That was away from a building, should that, should that count as impervious surface? I guess it's, if there's like so many inches of grass over it, but anyways.
A bomb shelter, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways we could go with this, and I, I'm already regretting opening this can of worms.
I do have a, a thought about whether. chapter, non-conforming structures chapter in 1010-4 and 1010-6, with respect to these accessory buildings or garages, in two ways. Both if the existing garage is approaching into the setback plane, and also if the existing accessory building is larger than 800 square feet. We had, a few months ago, we had that garage that we approved rebuilding that was 990 square feet, I believe. I think the non-conforming regulations might prevent, um, a second story on that garage, for example, even if we had it limited in square footage, because you can't expand the bulk of a non-conforming structure. And then in 1010-6, I find the language a little bit confusing, but it sort of says, for residents, we want to encourage additions, and so you can extend vertically side and rear walls without looking for variation. But that, it specifically references a, a non-conforming residence, so we want to add a non-conforming accessory structure. And as long as that setback plane is not invaded, I, I would think that would be appropriate.
I hesitate to do that, and I'm going to channel a little bit of John, and that is, if you have that non-conforming structure that you want to rebuild, you're going to have to make a choice. You can rebuild it to the way it is, or you can comply with the current code and then have your additional space.
So I was envisioning situations where someone's just retrofit building an addition on top of their existing garage, not building new. I don't know how common that would be, that you could just strengthen, you know, the roof of your existing garage?
All depends how much money you want to spend.
But if, people could do that, right? I mean, they could do that, so...
I'm not sure what would need to be changed, because it refers to buildings and structures.
In which, in which one, the 1010-6?
I think both.
In 1010-6, it says, um, "Nonconforming buildings and structures in the residential districts shall be subject to the provisions of this chapter. In an effort to accommodate additions to existing homes, in addition to a nonconforming residence, where such addition meets the minimum setback requirements, or the extension of a side or rear wall vertically, which does not meet the minimum side or rear yard requirements, are permitted without a variation, as long as there's no additional nonconformities." So, again, I find, I mean, the language is a bit abstruse, but I'm wondering, is it possible that someone trying to put on a second story on a garage where their non, it's a nonconforming building, could not do that because they can't expand the bulk of their nonconforming accessory structure? It's not maybe something to resolve right here. I'm just maybe Attorney Mars, Planner Siren can think about that.
Right, and so, like that subsection A, the extended building, whilst they're not creating additional nonconformities, would prevent someone from going into the plane, for instance, right?
No, what I'm thinking of is like the, it, it, that specific one, it only references residences.
Right, no, no, no. I know, but if we were to add it to allow for...
Yes, yes, and they still couldn't invade the setback.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So maybe change existing homes in Riverside to existing residential buildings in Riverside?
Yeah, that would be the right term for the second floor, I don't know. Or applicable accessory structures, or whatever. I was just thinking, there must be a lot of garages in Riverside that are not three feet off the property line. That would be my guess.
It's, they made a note.
Okay.
So do we want to try to rectify attic and story? How do we make the attic not become a full story? Or is this something that maybe the working group can try to address?
We, we can take a look at it. I think the intention of removing the proposed changes to attic was to remove that term from the accessory building conversation, to just leave it a primary residence? I'm not sure if that was achieved, if that, um, if Attorney Mars can speak to that. If, for residential buildings, does that need to say for primary residential buildings to make that a separate issue?
Which definition are you in?
In, in attic? Oh, I see, you said, since we took out, we added and then took out, and residential accessory buildings, you're interpreting today's definition as being the principal structure?
Just, just for the principal structure, that was the intent. And, and if you look at, um, there's a point that was raised in, let's see, um, page two of the memo, the, the last bullet point. So the previously proposed revisions to the definition of attic were removed, and I think, I think the reason, the reason I did that was because there was discussion about habitable. So I was trying to remove habitable from the conversation. Really, it seemed less relevant to accessory buildings than it did to a primary residence. So it seems like removing that term from the discussion of an accessory building made sense. I thought I achieved that in the, in removing the language from there. It could be that it still sounds like it applies to an accessory building. You know, it could be that, instead of for residential buildings, it could be for primary residential's buildings, could, could do that. Now, I don't know if that impacts the discussion about trying to limit the amount of space or a second story that we were having previously.
Any thoughts?
So, so I'm, I'm thinking out loud here. I think, though, that maybe if we add a maximum area for this space, say 200 square feet, it resolves itself, because if you build a, yeah, minimum garage is 20 by 20, it's kind of, well, I suppose you could have one car garage, but if you limit it to 200 square feet, to exceed that 50%, your garage's going to be, have to be less than 400 square feet. Right? So, if you're, I mean, you know, these drawings that I did, if you make this dormer space smaller, so that it, you know, this is, this would not, this would be well over 200 square feet. And, but if you're going to make it smaller, because, um, you know, you start to get smaller like this, um, and maybe even smaller than that, maybe you, you avoid that being an issue, because it's still an attic, if it has a nine-foot ceiling or an eight-foot ceiling, provided that 50% of that attic, which goes to the exterior walls, is below the eight feet. And we're going to say that, that eight feet, eight-foot-high area cannot exceed 200, or 250, whatever you say. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but can we go simpler and simply say that these accessory buildings cannot be more than one story? And our definition of story then restricts that to 50% or less of floor area. I, I think that's a simpler way to get at it, and that way, we, we actually don't have to talk about area at all, because the definition of story, and that 50% goes along with whatever size you pick for your, your initial floor plan, or your first floor footprint.
I'm not sure if I followed, did you follow that, Ann?
I believe so.
You're saying if the building has to be one story, doesn't that mean, that's telling people they can't put a second story on that? So they have to build something that doesn't qualify as a story?
Correct.
So they have to...
By definition...
The area that is taller than seven and a half feet has to be less than 50%.
Correct.
And then we just leave it the way it is.
I didn't explain it very well, but that's exactly what I was...
Yeah, I, I think I, yeah. But I think we should say that explicitly somewhere.
That, that's just it.
Because that'll get lost.
I, I think that's necessary.
Yeah, I think that's the right approach.
So we should put back in detached, well, just accessory buildings shall be limited to one story?
Yes, and a further explanation of what a story is, and that you need to refer to the definition of story.
With this agenda? All right, have everything...
Can I summarize? Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep.
Okay, so, I'm just going to go through my notes. This may be in somewhat random order here. Um, that one doesn't apply. Uh, so under the definition of accessory building, we need to clarify coach house and residential pool house under all those three definitions, where we have that same sentence. We need to make it clear that a residential pool house can't be a dwelling unit. So we'll clarify that. Uh, in accessory structure, we'll add examples, such as sidewalk, patio, fences, whatever, by that sentence. We will look further at the attic and what Joel had just suggested, and make sure that works, and somewhere in here, figure out how to explicitly state that that's what our intent is. Uh, under pool house, we will address that it's for in-ground pool only, uh, relative to this allowing the full plumbing at the pool house with the full plumbing. The, we will explicitly state that accessory buildings cannot be more than one story plus an attic as defined herein. Under coach houses, we want to state clearly that kitchen and full bathroom facilities permitted in those accessory buildings rather than structures. Under historical significance, we want to say any accessory building or structure deemed to be historically significant. And we need to look at the definition of grade, to make sure we are comfortable with that, and relative to what we're doing here. And, and is going to further look at paragraph 6C, uh, the exception that where there is inadequate room for detached garage, et cetera, et cetera, will, uh, the staff will look at that some more and report back. And then, under F, the final paragraph, uh, all, the last sentence, "All such facilities shall comply with applicable building codes. All utilities serving such facilities shall be extended from the existing primary dwelling." And I think...
And add a reference to pool houses.
And, right, and also the same sentence, the exception regarding coach houses and pool houses. Clarify that.
I think that's it.
Is that it?
So, sorry, did I say something? So it'll next go, once with edits, it'll go back to the village board, and then they'll make a determination whether or not to have us do a public hearing, correct?
I think that's up to you. If you want to, do you want to see this back before it goes to the board? I would suggest you go ahead and ask the board for direction to proceed with the public hearing, because I think these are issues we can resolve prior to or at the public hearing. But if you want to see this redrafted, before you do that, that's fine, too.
Does anybody want to? See it before it goes to the village board?
You'll get another shot at it.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't, I don't think I need to.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is approval of the 2023 commission work plan. Page 28 of the...
Did you want me to, please, okay, sure. Not much to say, but, there, there is not much to say. There is, um, just a brief summary that you had reviewed this during the, the previous meeting, and that the, um, additional items were incorporated as items F and G in their revised work plan, um, which you can see as attachment A, and that those items F and G, F was, consider reducing minimum drive aisle width for appropriate sites, and evaluating whether the maximum height allowed in the R1A and R1A districts is appropriate. And if the commission finds this acceptable, this presented to the village board, uh, by Chairperson Mateo, with additional notes, providing some context.
Are we adding the discussion about grade as well?
No. Not for the work, Matt.
Okay.
We're keeping a text file of issues that we need to address, as time allows.
Got a little code changes, items.
Are we good with this? Any changes?
Yeah.
I think so. Do we need to vote on it?
Add it for a vote, if you wouldn't mind taking a vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the 2023 PZC work plan?
So moved.
Second.
Guys are fast tonight. Please call the roll.
Sure.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then last up is approval of the 2023 meeting calendar. We've gone through a few iterations of it. Are we good with the dates, especially November and December?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. I don't think we need to vote on it, do we?
If you don't want to vote on it, you don't have to vote on it.
No, I don't want to. Okay. Our next meeting is November 30th, so please make sure it's on your calendar. Do we know if we already have an item for it?
I, I don't know that we have an item for it. I'll, I'll keep you informed as soon as we know for sure.
Okay. As long as it's on your calendar. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Sorry. Come on.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, tonight, including Trustee Pollock and Planner Siren. It's good work.